Good evening, this is the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, September 6th, 2016. But we're going to start tonight with a meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund, so we will call to order a meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund, and the first and only item on our agenda is a request from Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital for a donation for their free care services that they provide. Would anyone like to speak to this? Town Administrator?
Yes, Madam Chairman. This is a request that is made yearly by Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital, and it helps to defray the costs associated with the hospital going out to residents that need care in the town of Milton. And historically, the town has given between $5,000 and $10,000 to the hospital for this service. Currently, you have about $320,000 in your Governor Stoughton Fund.
So the request is for up to $10,000. Does anyone on the board have a preference?
Last year, I noticed we gave $5,000. You know, I'm open. You know, it's obviously a really good, you know, deed that they do, and so I'm open to increasing that to, say, $7,500 if that works for anybody else.
I think $7,500 is fine.
Yeah, I have no objection to that. In the past years, we have given $10,000. I don't recall the reason last year for going to $5,000.
I think the real concern is just how low that fund is getting, really.
Yeah.
And, to be honest, we still need a master plan, and, you know, we may need some of that fund to figure out what to do with our four acres up there, so.
And in addition, Madam Chairman, I think you were, you had a lot of requests last year for this fund for needy families.
That's true. We have had a number of requests for the fund. Okay, so do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the request of Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital for a donation of $7,500 to help to defray the cost of free care provided to needy residents of Milton.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, we will adjourn the meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund, and at 7:07 PM, call to order the Board of Selectmen's meeting. First item on our agenda is approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 23rd as written.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Future meeting dates, we're scheduled to meet again three weeks from today, September 27th. We had some scheduling conflicts that we couldn't all, um, be available prior to that time.
That's great.
So why don't we then look at our October calendars and work with Ms. Martin to figure out October dates?
That's great.
Okay. Citizens speak. Do we have anyone tonight who would like to address the board at Citizens Speak? Mr. Joe Henning?
Hi, I'm Phil Joe Henning, 23 Parkway Drive. I had written an email to the Board of Selectmen about my concern about an aircraft accident and planning for an aircraft accident in the town of Milton. And I had asked the ANAC Chair if he was aware of any plans. He had mentioned to me that there's an emergency planning committee in town, and they would be responsible. I asked him if ANAC could have a joint meeting with the emergency planning committee, and I didn't hear back from him. So I had also asked if the Board of Selectmen could meet maybe with the Chair of the Emergency Planning Committee and talk about what plans exist. What I think, I think there are a lot of bureaucracies involved potentially, and I don't know who would be responsible for planning and coordinating in the event of an accident. Would it be Mass Emergency Management? Would they be responsible? Would Milton Police and Fire be responsible? Would Massport? Would the federal bureaucracies, the FAA and the transportation, the body that investigates accidents be responsible? So I think, you know, getting down to at least who is responsible overall for the site, who would they delegate, who would they ask for help? I am positive that the town of Milton would be involved in such an accident should one occur. And so it seems to me that if a plan is formalized with whoever is responsible, whether it be MIMO or Massport or whoever, that once it is determined that Milton would be in line, our first responders would be called upon, I think then there's an issue of funding. And I think that's important to us as we look at fire stations and things like that. For instance, if there were a fuel fire, would we have the chemicals available instantaneously to extinguish a fuel fire? I don't know that. Where would they be stored? Do we have space to store them? Is there a plan when we rebuild fire stations for storage areas for such chemicals? Where would ambulances come from? Area by area inside the town, we have a lot of small roads, congested areas, heavily populated areas. It seems to me that we should at least be able to review a plan for our neighborhoods and see how would we be evacuated, where would we go, who, is there a radio station or something where we could tune in and find out what we're supposed to do? You might say, well, you know, the possibility of an aircraft accident is really remote. You know, in May of 2015, Massport had a simulation in Quincy Bay, and it seems to me, if it's possible that there would be an accident in Quincy Bay, it's also possible that there might be an accident in Quincy, or Dorchester, or Milton. And so if they're planning for an accident, it seems to me that we need to plan for an accident. And the other thing that concerns me is 4L. If the 4L RNAV is, let's say, implemented, the proximity of 4R and 4L is so close that it seems to me an accident is more likely. If something happened on the runway and aircraft needed to be diverted, they often arrive two every three minutes, or three every two minutes, aircraft. So if something happened and they needed to move away from the runway, where would they go? And would that cause some type of chaos in the air that would increase the likelihood of an accident? Additionally, as I mentioned to you in my email, you know, really odd things do happen, and I remind you that in 2010, Delvanti Tisdale fell on my street from an aircraft. The aircraft had departed from Charlotte Douglas Airport, a major hub airport, and this man had never been on an airplane. He'd rarely been to an airport. He managed to penetrate the perimeter. He managed to walk across the tarmac, and he managed to get inside the wheel well of an aircraft. What's the probability of that? So if something like that can happen, well, then certainly, an aircraft accident is, could happen. And it could happen in Milton, just like Delvanti Tisdale fell to his death in Milton. And so I guess I'd say that I would like to see someone, some committee, whether it be ANAC, or the Emergency Planning Committee, or the Board of Selectmen, have some planning meetings. I'd like to see some coordination with Massport so that Milton would be identified as a potential first responder, and I'd like to see Massport fund our, in part, our fire department and our police department because they would be relied upon, and we need to be ready. And that might mean facilities, chemicals, additional personnel, I don't know. But if we start talking about it, and if we are recognized, then it seems to me that funding would be appreciated and needed in the event of such an emergency. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joe Henning. Is there anyone tonight for Citizens Speak? And seeing none, we will move on to item number five, which is a request from the School Department for Quarry Hills Courtesy Day.
I'll make a motion to approve a request of the Milton Public Schools to host a fundraiser on the Granite Links Courtesy Day in 2016.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Item number six was going to be the Managers Union Contract, but I understand we're going to defer that until a future meeting. So we will defer number six.
I apologize. I just happened to read this motion again. It looks like the day's going to be 2017, not 16. You want to read?
It's 2017. Well, then, let's reconsider them.
Okay, make a motion to reconsider.
And second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I'll make a motion to approve a request from Milton Public Schools to host a fundraiser on Granite Links Courtesy Day in 2017.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Good catch.
Yes, good catch. Number seven is an appointment of the Pilot Committee, and we have some, oh, Mr. Burns, do you want to discuss this? I know you've mentioned it at the previous meeting.
Yeah, you know, I'm really excited that, you know, all the great work that the committee, the Pilot Committee did, headed by Dimitri Pedion, and their report. I think it really shows, you know, the services that are being used on a daily basis in town. And so I'm looking forward to serving on this, and I know we've got some appointments in front of you all, and, you know, looking forward to talking and strategizing to find ways to really provide relief from the tax burden that the residents face every day for a lot of the services that these nonprofits use regularly.
And I'm glad you're willing to take this on for our board. You have a lot of background in this area, so it makes sense as well.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Emery Fagant, Town Administrator, David D. Burns of 24 Garfield Road, and James Henderson of 121 Atherton Street to the Payment in Lieu of Tax Committee to serve through September 2017.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Good. Good to see that committee appointed and getting started. Number eight is a meeting with the Chair of our Airplane Noise Advisory Committee, and Mr. Schmidt is here. Andy, would you like to come up and join us?
Hi, Andy.
You may want to stay for number nine as well, which is related. It's a letter to the FAA.
Okay, so, where to start? So, the, as you know, we track the monthly reports, and to give you a sense of how bad the situation is and what the trend is. And what we're seeing right now is that the trend is, as we've discussed, worsening. As of, or through, rather, July 31st, Milton had filed 55% of all the noise complaints at Logan Airport. That amounts to 10,372 reports, which is already more than twice the number of reports that we filed for all last year. That equates to about one complaint for every two and a half people in the town, far more than any other community in Massachusetts. And we filed more noise complaints in the first six months of this year than Massport received in all of 2013. The estimates peg the upper end of this year's noise complaints, somewhere around 17,000, and shows that the people in Milton continue to suffer unevenly, unduly, given the increase in airplane traffic at Logan. To put it in context, we had 102 noise complaints in 2012, and 10,372 just a few years later in 2016, year to date. So it's just an unreal amount of noise for us, and we continue to file more noise complaints than the next five most affected communities combined, as well as have the most callers of any community. One of the other things that I wanted to bring to your attention, and I know that many, if not most, of you are aware of it, is the last three weekends have been particularly unbearable for the people in Milton. So the weekend of August 19th being just a prime example, and let me step back, for each of the last three weekends, we've had at least, on average, 12 hours of airplane noise a day. This past weekend, it's been nonstop, literally nonstop, except for about maybe two and a half hours over the course of the weekend since Friday morning. Here it is, here it is, late Monday evening, sorry, late Tuesday evening, and people are just beside themselves in terms of lack of sleep, inability to enjoy their homes, and so on. But what we're seeing is that part of the problem is that rather than simply switch the pattern, because 15 has been closed for a while for maintenance during the prime usage hours of the day, they simply reverse the pattern. So they'll use the 4s for arrivals for most of the day, then they'll just switch it to the 22s, so we then get the departure traffic. Is it as significant? No, but it's still a lack of quiet for Milton as we're simply swapping one problem for another. One of the other things that we've noticed is that, especially for that weekend of the 19th, a lot of what was happening was that the winds were from the southeast, and when the winds are from the southeast, they are supposed to be using the 15s. That's the entire reason why they have a southeast flow plan. And what we're noticing is that during that weekend, we received about as many flights that weekend as 15 received all year. And so it is a continuing problem. And what some of the challenges are, is that the conditions that they're using the 4s under, when it's a southeast wind, so southeast wind about 20 miles an hour, well, it's a northeast wind of about 15 miles an hour right now. So if they can use the 4s to take pressure off in the southeast for 20 miles an hour, they should be able to use other runways to take pressure off of us when the winds are out of the northeast. The FAA continues to tell us, Massport continues to tell us, that wind direction is the primary factor in runway use, but more and more, we're seeing that it's demand, demand and comfort. So we've been locked into the 4-9 combination again since Friday morning. And when the winds have been variable, the winds have been calm for some of these weekends, and people are lamenting coming home on Sunday nights because they can see the planes stacked up over the town. Some of the other issues that we're seeing is that the, whether it's the pilots, whether it's the tower, they're continuing to cut corners, cut corners on the flight path. That's part of the reason why East Milton in particular gets hit hard with the inbound traffic, because they get it when it, and this happens specifically, when the traffic comes in over the top of Boston and then moves back around. So rather than going out to the Navo marker, which is out by the highway or out by 95, they turn, they turn a few miles too early, about, let's say, based off of this, about three miles too early. So adding a tight turn under 3,000 feet to an already noisy pattern simply ratchets the noise up even more. And so you'll just hear this roar across the town as these procedures are in place. So there is, people are getting increasingly restless, increasingly frustrated, increasingly upset, and it affects everything in your lives, interpersonal relationships, relationships with your children, even the ability to get work done. So I appreciate your time and attention on this particular issue, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Did you also want to talk about the Vortex Generator letter?
Yes, absolutely. So one of the items that we've identified and have brought up as a possible, at least partial remedy, is the installation of something called a Vortex Generator. Have you seen me bring the 3D model of one to pass meetings? And the purpose of the letter that we drafted was to ask the airlines here in the U.S. to follow the lead of airlines like Air France, British Airways, Lufthansa, Easyjet, and Condor over in Europe to install the Vortex Generators on the A320 series aircraft, and that spans the A319 to the A321. And this problem has been known for years, or known of for years, and Airbus came out with a solution for it. In fact, you can't buy a new Airbus 320 series without these Vortex generators in place. And so we had a couple of edits to the letter, partially for clarity, but also to add the fact that United Airlines recently announced that they'll be retrofitting their fleet as well. So it's still, there's still thousands of planes that fly into Logan, thousands of literal aircraft that fly into Logan without these devices in place. But the, as you know, the signature whine, the signature piercing tone of an A320 cuts through just about everything, and you know when an A320 is overhead. According to Airbus, according to others, installing a Vortex Generator cuts that noise by about half, so it makes, it can make the A320 traffic at least a bit more bearable while we deal with the overall imbalance in airplane traffic over the town.
Okay, and Andy has given us a draft of a letter that the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee put together. I don't know if we've sent this over to Town Council, but I thought the substance of the letter looked good. I don't know what my colleagues have thought of you having comments on it.
I did too.
So maybe we should just run this by Town Council. We need to get the names and addresses of the carriers that this would go to, but I thought it seems like a good letter to me.
To me as well, and, you know, we're looking for any relief we can find here. And so, you know, this is something that, you know, people are doing this. They've done it in Europe, they're now doing it here. There's no reason why, you know, we can't get some headway here, and our elected officials above us can't drive this home and mandate it, and that's what I'm looking for.
Andy, when did they start putting the, installing the Vortex Generators on the newer?
It's within, well, so if I'm remembering the dates correctly, if you go back to 2014, that's when they started making the fix available, and that was about the cutoff for when you could get an A320 without a Vortex Generator in place. So since then, they've been delivering them with the Vortex Generators in place. And what's interesting is that a number of the European airlines have taken great pains to demonstrate that they're doing this for a specific reason, and that's to reduce noise, that's to reduce the impact on the airplane communities or airport communities. Lufthansa in specific has devoted a fairly good-sized portion of their website to what steps they are taking to reduce airplane noise, and the Vortex Generator is just one of the steps. Continuous descent is another. Deploying gear later in the flight is yet another step that they're taking, because they recognize that this is a quality of life issue, it's a health issue.
And the air life of these planes is probably 10 to 15 years that they?
If not longer, yeah.
So there's still many, many?
Still many, many, still many, many years of life in these airframes. The added weight of these devices is nil. It is somewhat less than what a current iPhone is. So when you consider the number of things that people forget on a flight, that weighs more.
And the cost is insignificant when you're talking about the total cost of an airline.
Yeah, it's anywhere, the cost varies depending on who you talk to and what article you read, but it's somewhere in the $5,000 to $10,000 range. Lufthansa was quoted at spending around $1 million to retrofit their entire fleet. And when you consider that under the Next Gen program, the airlines are expected to save billions of dollars, tens of billions of dollars.
That's what I mean. It's minute.
It's a rounding error.
When it gets to the big picture.
I think we should have this letter, once we do vote to sign it and issue it, for all three of us to sign it, for the full board. So why don't we just plan to give this to our town's attorneys, ask them to take a look at it, and put it on our next agenda for approval, and that way we can get the copies, we get the addresses, the names, and all the information, get the letter duplicated to all the different carriers, and have it ready to be voted on. It's not on our agenda specifically for tonight, so it's good that we had this discussion, that the committee has put this forward. But, okay, anything else on this subject, Andy, or anything else from the committee?
We are planning to have our next meeting on the 20th. We are confirming that, we're going to confirm that the next couple of days, and we'll post the meeting notice once that's finalized. The agenda is set, but, as you know, is flexible up until a few days ahead of time for posting reasons. And if anyone wants to come, we welcome them. Want to hear from, we want to hear from them specifically, directly if possible, and add voices to the chorus.
It certainly has been a bad summer of airplane noise, and that gets us into number nine, which is a letter to the FAA and Massport. And the idea here is to just document for the FAA in particular, the conditions, especially over the weekends that Andy cited, the last three weekends. This weekend was another terrible weekend of airplane noise. So we have a few comments that have come over today. They are not, we don't, we have a draft for Friday, but the comments that have come over today have not yet been incorporated, and there's some exhibits that we need to attach. We are also waiting on some data for this weekend, and given the fact that it's Tuesday and the planes are still overhead, we need to insert that, but it may be, it may make sense to include data for today, and if the situation persists tomorrow, to include tomorrow's data as well. So there's a placeholder for that, but other than the exhibits and filling in the Labor Day Weekend data, is there anything, any comments from this board on this draft?
I thought the letter was well-written, it was factual, you know, it laid everything out. I don't think it was, you know, over the top at all, so I like the letter. I thought it was a good letter.
Okay.
I too agree. I think it was well-written, and I think it'll serve us well by Sunday.
Okay, so why don't we get, so, well, it's on our agenda to approve and sign. Why don't we, if the board is comfortable with approving it in substance tonight, subject to filling in the Labor Day Weekend data, attaching the exhibits, and the edits that hopefully have been circulated to everybody, but that came over various times today, but you're, you know, not, there's not a lot, not a lot of changes. There were a few.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve and sign, subject to the changes discussed in the exhibits, a letter to the FAA and Massport.
Second.
Then, if no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay. Mr. Schmidt, anything else from your committee, or any further observations?
The, there is a, you know, rising trend that appears that we are getting more traffic, or sorry, the increase in traffic that we're getting is actually greater than the increase in traffic that the airport itself is getting. My concern, and the concern of many people in the committee, is that that increase will become increasingly disproportionate. The reason for that being that the 4R can simply accommodate, or the 4R combination can simply accommodate more traffic. And until, until the 15s are used appropriately, until 14 is added to that mix to take some pressure off of the 15, I think that we're going to see more and more noise over time. And, you know, as you know, MIT projected that the communities north and south of Logan would get up to 90% of the airplane traffic. I think we're well on our way towards that, towards that outcome unless a significant change is made.
Well, it certainly has been a problem that a lot of people have been working on, and thank you to you and the committee, as well as to the grassroots group, and our CAC representative, and a lot of others who are trying to attack this problem from a lot of different angles. So, all right, thank you for coming in tonight, Andy.
Thank you, Andy.
And you're going to stay with us and join us later on in the evening. The next item is the Town Administrator's Report.
Yes, Madam Chairman, I have two things I wanted to discuss this evening. The first was an article in the Milton Times, the August 25th Milton Times, and it was on page two at a glance, and it talked about a new vision for the Council on Aging Center. And I just wanted to clarify what took place as a result of this article. I believe the Board of Selectmen's meeting that Tuesday evening, the board talked about its vision of what it wanted to, projects, and it wanted to see for its next town administrator. And one of those projects was talking about consolidation, and I know we had a discussion of, in the past, of creating a human services department whereby we bring together our seniors, our recreational programs, our health, and our veterans, and we have them all under one umbrella, whereas, whereby we could share resources. And so I think we talked a little bit about that that evening. And as a result of that, after the meeting, at the end of, conclusion of the meeting, Laura Griffin and I had a conversation that went a little deeper into that thought process. And I talked about Randolph had just broken ground on a new community center, and they were excited about that. And I said, "A lot of cities and towns are moving towards this human services department whereby sharing the services." But I never said that the Council on Aging should become a community center, so I just wanted to clarify that. I know that that's not big enough to do that, but I guess my conversation was that I think if the town moving forward in a forward direction, I think that one of the things you should look at is the possibility of creating a human services department whereby having all of those services under one umbrella. So I just wanted to clarify that article on the 25th. And the next item I want to talk about is a report regarding the permits issued for 95 Hinckley Road. As you know, at our last meeting on August 23rd, it was not on our agenda, so I could not speak. not speak about it at that time. I have concluded the report, and I just want to go over and summarize what my findings were. This report is issued in response to an article that appeared in the Boston Globe on August 16th concerning the improvements in permitting issued at the home of Senator and Mrs. Brian Joyce, 95 Hinckley Road. I reviewed the Inspection Service Department's building permit file and the Milton Board of Appeals 2003 file related to the Joyce's request for zoning variance to build a breezeway. As a result of looking into these files, I have concluded that the developer who sold the property and/or Senator and Mrs. Joyce obtained the necessary building permits for the work described in those records. And let me outline how I came to this conclusion. So, try to be brief on this, but I think it's important. The prior owner of the property was Norfolk Development. And in connection with its construction of Fieldstone Lane subdivision, Norfolk relocated the home now owned by the Joyce's, which was not then habitable, to a different location on the same lot. Norfolk obtained building permits to construct a new foundation for the house and a detached two-car garage with a loft. On September 27th, 2002, Norfolk applied for a building permit to install new HVAC, electrical and plumbing, insulate walls, re-side part of the house, driveway, plastering and painting, new roof, new sewer and water lines. The application estimated the value of the work to be about $110,000. Now, again, this is back in 2002. So, the September 27th, 2002 permit application was very broad and clearly applied to interior and exterior work. I had a discussion with the Milton Building Commissioner, Joseph, the current Milton Building Commissioner, Joseph Ponderak. And let me preface that nobody that works in the Inspection Services Department today worked in the Inspection Department in 2002 and 2003. So, I did have to rely on the files in that department. But the Commissioner advised me that in many municipalities, prior to the establishment of an online permitting, the records were often broad and included general descriptions of the work to be done. So, they didn't really drill it down like they do today. It's much more concise, and it's really outlined a lot cleaner in today's online permitting process. The Inspection Services Department's files included a one-page Milton assessor's property record, date stamped October 25th, 2002, with comments noting major repairs, rehab in progress, new exterior walls, needs windows, garage in progress also, and the property should be rechecked when completed. Senator and Mrs. Joyce purchased the home from Norfolk on February 6th, 2003. The Senator and Mrs. Joyce applied for a permit to construct a breezeway that would attach the house to the garage. A copy of the permit application is not on file. However, a letter dated May 6th, 2003, from former Milton Building Commissioner Stephen Crawford to Senator and Mrs. Joyce acknowledges receipt of the Joyce's application for a building permit and their site plan, and advises that the Joyce's should seek a variance from the Milton Board of Appeals. On June 10th, 2003, the Board of Appeals held a hearing on the Joyce's request for zoning variance for the construction of a breezeway. At this hearing, Senator Joyce stated that he had wanted to purchase the home as-is, but that Norfolk would not sell the home on those terms. Norfolk would sell the home to the Joyce's only if the Joyce's agreed to retain Norfolk as the general contractor for the work remaining to be done. Senator and Mrs. Joyce agreed and acquired the property from Norfolk and retained Norfolk to complete the work. Senator Joyce told the Board of Appeals that the house was not habitable at either the time of his purchase or the date of the hearing. Again, the hearing was June 10th, 2003. Senator Joyce described exterior work that had been performed, but noted that the home did not have running water, the interior was still being done, and Senator and Mrs. Joyce and their children were living in various locations at this time because the home was not habitable. They were living with relatives. At the hearing, Senator Joyce expressed his hope that an occupancy permit would soon be issued to enable his family to move into the home and all be under one roof. The Board of Appeals unanimously voted to grant a variance to Senator and Mrs. Joyce for the construction of the breezeway. At approximately the same time that they sought the variance, Senator and Mrs. Joyce wrote to Building Commissioner Stephen Crawford and requested his approval to construct a driveway. The Joyce's also submitted a landscape plan and noted that the driveway fencing and planting would be within a 10-foot buffer, but that their neighbors had no objection to the plan. On May 12th, 2003, Building Commissioner Crawford notified the Joyce's that no buffer zone was required, and there was no building codes or zoning violations proposed in their latest landscape proposal. All of the foregoing may be found in public files located in the Inspection Services Department, both the tapes of the June 10th, 2003 Board of Appeals hearing and the Board of Appeals July 9th, 2003 written decision that extensive rehabilitation work was underway and the home was not habitable either when the Joyce's purchased the home or at the time of the Board of Appeals hearing. So, again, from what was in the files and listening to the tape of the 2003 Board of Appeals hearing, I could only conclude that either Norfolk or Senator and Mrs. Joyce sought and obtained the necessary permits or approvals to rehabilitate the property as described in those records. I will defer to the elected Milton Board of Assessors to address the questions regarding assess value calculations.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Do we have any comments or questions from the board on this report?
It seems complete. I mean, it's so difficult to know exactly what was done, and, I mean, it's almost 15 years ago now.
It was hard, Mr. Hurley, because there is no historical knowledge down there, no one that you could tap and ask questions up because everybody has left.
Right. And you are right, even today, you know, building permit applications are written very generally. I mean, plans are usually submitted now, but I suspect plans may have been submitted then. But if it's just rehab work, you know, a lot of times it is pretty general.
Like you said, I don't, you know, things have changed due to the online procedure now, and it is broad. And the only way you'd know is if you were inside, you know, to see exactly what. So, we'll leave that up to the assessors to handle that and evaluation and stuff.
Yeah, I know the assessors have already had a discussion at one of their recent meetings, but I'm glad that the town administrator took it upon herself to investigate the matter and write a report because the Inspection Services Department is under the Board of Selectmen, and it's a direct report to the town administrator, an indirect report to this board. And a newspaper article like this obviously is harmful to the people it's about, Senator and Mrs. Joyce, but it's also not good for the town of Milton to have articles like that written. So, I am glad, Mrs. Fagan, that you wrote such an extensive report. And as you concluded, the September 2002 building permit was very broad. And if Senator Joyce was not even living in the home in June of 2003, several months after having purchased it, and indicated that the developer was the one still doing some of the work, that would certainly be consistent with the fact that a very broad permit had been pulled the year before. Again, none of us were around, none of us took part in this, but it was in connection with the Fieldstone Lane subdivision, and that was eight or nine new homes being built in town. And this property that the Joyce's ultimately purchased was the property on that site. I remember when it was moved, and it was on, I don't know, stilts or whatever you would for quite a period of time in order for the property to be subdivided and several new homes to be put in. So, this is a very good report, and thank you for your work on this and for responding to some of the questions that have been raised by a lot of people have been asking. So, I appreciate your putting the time into this and looking at the files. You have a lot on your plate as it is, but to take the time to do this, I think, was important for the town and for the town government and the board as well. Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else on this report? Anything else under the Town Administrator's Report?
I know that that's it, Madam Chair.
Okay. Chair's report. I just wanted to remind all of the viewers that we have an election on Thursday, September 8th, two days from today, state senate and state representative races. And we want to encourage people to get out and vote. It's a busy time. People are just back to work after Labor Day. But still, it's important that whether it's seniors, young parents, everyone get out to vote and make your voice heard. And just also to thank and acknowledge all of the candidates who are running. We have a lot of candidates running this time. And all of us have been elected to this board, so we know what it's like to run a campaign and go through that process. They had to do it during a very hot, humid summer. And I think regardless of the outcome in these races, all of them are to be commended for stepping forward and putting themselves in the arena and being willing to run for office. It's not an easy thing to do. So, thank you to all of them for running and hope everyone gets out to vote on Thursday. Polls are open, I believe, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And the Town Clerk's Office can answer any questions regarding polling locations if anyone should have any questions.
Also, thanks to the Town Clerk and her staff for the duty that they do. They do an exceptional job.
Very busy here this year.
Very busy.
Yes. I have nothing else to report. Do we have any reports tonight?
I don't have anything at this time.
Nothing at this time.
Citizen Speak Response.
After I got Mr. Joe Hennings' email, I contacted Jack Grant just to -- because, you know, out of curiosity and anything is, you know, do we have procedures in place or what we would do in this? And he said, basically, he told me it was, you know, the fire department goes through extensive training, there's extensive protocol, they probably would be the first responders to this thing. And, you know, we have a, you know, a huge, what do you call it?
The local emergency planning committee?
Hasn't.
Well, not the has, but the...
The local emergency planning committee?
Well, the other towns that come in and respond, you know.
Mutually.
Mutually. And that it would be handled pretty much like any other emergency. Obviously, you know, if it were a large plane and had a populated area, it would be devastating, you know, and there would be, you know, everybody on the scene shortly. They do have some material to deal with oil and gas fires, but, you know, wouldn't they have anything for jet fuel? Would be, you know, questionable. But, yeah, it's the type of thing that -- he said, "All towns in Massachusetts would not be equipped to deal with, by themselves, anything like that, nor would they be expected to have the equipment." But I also mentioned to Jack, if next time he comes in for his quarterly report, if he could just kind of go over those procedures, you know, just so the public can understand what, you know, what preparedness, you know, goes into any kind of major emergency. And we do have the Milton Emergency Management, MIMA, and, you know, they work with BID, and they could be really brought into play in a moment's notice.
Well, the hospital's also a member of the local emergency planning committee, but after Mr. Joe Hennings sent us that email, I responded to him, letting him know we would take that under advisement. We obviously have a lot of airplane issues, and as we said, we're dealing with them on a lot of different fronts. So, there's some that are a greater priority based on some things that are happening, but it's certainly something that we can consider and talk with the local emergency planning committee as well as Chief Grant about.
Yeah, I agree.
Future agenda items.
Madam Chair, I would like to mention one that I would like to put on. Your next agenda is a discussion about the, I know it's hard to believe, but a discussion about fiscal '18 budget process. I know we just closed '16 or '17, and we are going to discuss '18. So, I'd like to put that on your next agenda.
Okay.
Great.
And with the change role that the town administrator plays, that probably will be a slightly different discussion than what we've had in past years?
Yes.
Okay. Any other future agenda items? And if not, I will move that we enter into executive session to approve executive session minutes to discuss negotiating strategy with respect to litigation, airplane issues, and strategy with respect to real property, Zero Central Avenue, believing that having such discussions in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the board and to return to open session for the purpose of adjournment. Let me say that it would have a detrimental effect on the litigating and negotiating position of the board and to return to open session for the purpose of adjournment.
Second.
All in favor? Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So, we are now in executive session.